Mr. Chairman. Well, when it comes up, you want to ask him? Really have time to have that long conversation? That's a lot to ask.
Good evening. Want to welcome everyone to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, February 15, 2022 meeting. Ask Commissioner Richardson to open us with the invocation.
Precious heavenly Father.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance. Flag. United States of America. The Republic of. One nation. God. visible. liberty and justice for all.
Records show we have a full form of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the February 1st meeting in your packet.
Motion to accept as presented.
Questions? All favor raise your right hand. Carries. Changes to the agenda?
Not a lot, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we just want to welcome everyone here. Break down to presentation. Ms. Carroll, you want to speak when we actually get to the... What I normally do is wait till we get to that item and then... Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. The necessary committees and the necessary votes to be placed on this agenda. So if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to approve them all.
Motion to accept as presented.
Questions? All favor raise your right hand. Carries. Right to the debate, Vice Chairman Richardson.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of Resolutions 22-03 through 22-05 to establish districts in Crawford Creek.
Second. This is our developer requested streetlight district for these three neighborhoods.
Second reading, so it makes it official.
Correct.
Any questions? All favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. On to Commissioner Malier.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the revisions to the Comprehensive Policy Number 104.1. Definitions 236.1 catastrophic leave, 216.1 service recognition, and 237.1 personal time off.
Second.
Johnson, you want to make comments?
Yes, sir. This is a revision to the Comprehensive Policy Manual as it relates to the catastrophic leave incentive. Several years ago, it was at 15 years, and then it was moved to 25 years in 2012. And there was a conflict with the policy manual. Other places said 15. So what this actually does is it says employees who reach age 65 or who... The employees who have 20 more years of creditable service. 65, I'm sorry, with 15 years, or employees with 20 or more years of creditable county service will be eligible for the catastrophic leave incentive.
Any questions? All favor raise your right hand. Carries.
I make a motion to approve the proclamation for Career Technical and Agricultural Education Month in Columbia County.
Second.
I would just say that I think the board is aware, but we'll make the public aware that last year, the Internal Services Division led by Leanne Reese came up with a competition for automotive... High school automotive programs all competed. It was such a hit that this year they decided to expand that. And we did that last Friday and Saturday. The county sponsored that event along with the sheriff, and a lot of folks in this room contributed to that and made that a very successful event. But we had over 200 students from all of the high schools in Columbia County competing in the CTAE pathways. It was a very successful program, and we, at that time, wanted to just make sure we recognized the CTAE program in Columbia County and actually acknowledged that this was CTAE Month.
Right. It's fantastic accolades to staff, especially Ms. Leanne for her work and her idea, and blossomed into a really great program.
Great, great program.
I did not bring a copy of such proclamation to read to y'all, so I appreciate.
That's okay. Just full disclosure, we've already given it to them.
Okay.
Do be the pleasure of voting it through. That would really be nice. All favor raise your right hand. Proclamation carries. On to Commissioner Skinner.
Yes, sir. Item B1, File RZ220201. I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from R1 to P1 for a property located at Tax Map 068, Parcel 960, for a proposed medical clinic, subject to the conditions enumerated, on February 3, 2022, Planning Commission report.
Second.
As Commissioner Skinner just stated, this is for a medical clinic. This is beside West Church. It's located here. This is our exhibition center. It's located here. One thing I want to point out is one of the requirements that is put on this rezoning by the Health Department is that a sewer connection must be made. The closest sewer connection is here. This parcel here is owned by Columbia County. They are looking to put a lift station on their property about here. They will have to run a private sewer line to get to our manhole. So while you're not taking action tonight on that part, they will have to come back to this board and ask for an easement to get on county property to run a private sewer line. Just for your thought as you consider this.
But they're paying.
It'll be entirely their cost, but they will have to come back to you. Granted, so this is not the last time you will see this one. You have to make... There's a variance that you'll appear next, and then in the future when they come in with an actual plan submitted, we'll have to bring this back to you to consider allowing them to put their private sewer line on county property. Want to make that clear for everybody. Michael.
Sorry. Is that setting a precedent in any way that...
I don't know that it's a precedent. I don't know whether there can be a precedent for government. I don't know.
Yeah. Every property is unique. Every situation. I think that it judges for the merits of itself, and whatever comes in the future, judge on those.
Okay.
Can we expect these R1s to mostly change? I mean, is somebody going to come build a house in the middle of...
So this parcel here is all Columbia County Board of Commissioner-owned property. This parcel here is owned by the YMCA. We own all of this as well. The Board of Commissioners owns this. This tract here, I believe, is owned by the Carter family or the Branch family, or the Carter Branch family. I do expect to see something happening on that R1 piece as well. I believe the hospital owns...
They're on the S1 piece, right?
They do. The hospital does own the S1 piece, and I believe they also own this R1 piece. So I would assume that in the future, you'll see something from the hospital coming there, some medical office buildings. Their first concept plan they showed us had some actual parking there to support the hospital, but the plan did not have that parking there. I think they realized it was too far removed. But I do see these two parcels changing in the future. This, we know the YMCA had plans of putting a freestanding YMCA in that location. I'm not sure if their plans are still to do that. Mr. Johnson, I'm not sure if you're aware of if their plans are...
Still the plan on the books. I don't know if they've done anything to move forward with it.
And the Exhibition Center sits on a R1?
It is. So we can rezonate if we need to. Code does not make government rezon for government buildings on zone property.
So is all of Gateway Boulevard all the way up to rights for R1?
A vast majority of it, yes, sir, R1. Some of them, maybe RE. I'm not sure. Scotty, you know off the top of your head. He's looking it up. But it's all residential owned. Now, as Gateway Boulevard turns and heads south, it does have some industrial zoning on the west side of it.
Any questions?
No.
All favor raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Next item B2, File VA220202. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to Section 90-139, buffers and screening for the property located at Tax Map 068, Parcel 960, to remove the fence from the structural buffer requirement, subject to the condition enumerated in the February 3, 2022, Planning Commission report.
A second.
This is the same parcel we just discussed. Code requires, due to the dismember zoning from the P1, which is here, which you just approved, to the R1, which is here, they can either do a 30-foot buffer or a 20-foot buffer with a 10-foot fence. They are proposing a 30-foot buffer for the majority of the side up here and back in here. However, there is a portion right in this area where it gets tight, so they're going for the 20-foot buffer, which requires the fence. However, since all of this area here is wetlands and stream buffers and floodplain, nothing will be built there. So they're asking for a waiver to not have to put a fence up that protects the view line from natural area into their parking lot. There will never be anything else developed in that area due to environmental sense of areas.
Any questions? All favor raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Item B3, File...
Okay, we're on three. Never mind.
Item B3, File VA220201. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance from Section 90-98, listed lot, structural requirements for property located Tax Map 078, Parcel 144, to revise building setback for proposed and existing buildings.
Second.
This being in the overlay district, it is. We do have a maximum distance from the center line of the road that a building can be constructed. It's faint here, but this line is roughly here is where the building should not be further back then. So we're asking people to build close to the road, but you're parking behind. In this situation, you have a retention pond that's existing, sitting here. So they're asking to have a variance to allow them to move further away from the road than what our code says. They will line up with the other existing buildings. They will also landscape approximately this area here as required by code to provide a buffer to this new building.
Any questions? All favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. I do believe with this next item, initially, the person requesting the variance wanted to withdraw.
I believe Mr. Finley is here.
Was it this one or was it a second or both?
I'm sorry, sir.
Is your request to...
Hold on. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, sir. Tyler Finley, represent Houston Homes, 8219 North Crossing Court, Forts, Georgia. I'm sorry, sir.
Is your request to withdraw both or just the second part of this that I believe is near the golf course?
We would like to withdraw both Crestwood Parkway and Bronco Pass for Oaks Phases 3 and 4 from the agenda. We would like some time to go back and re-engineer some of those, get some buffers right, bring it back before the Planning Commission and you guys.
When you say buffers, what buffers are you trying to get right? 50-foot or where are you trying to go with that?
Yes, sir. So on the Bronco Pass piece, we'd originally requested a reduction from 50 to 20-foot to work with the golf course 30-foot buffer. We want to go back and move that to the other side so it's not on the golf course side. There's a wetland at the bottom, a Bronco Pass that we feel like would be a better place to put that buffer. And then on the Crestwood Parkway piece, we want to go back and we asked for a variance from 50 down to 15. I just need to get my engineer to look at that road, how the roads will tie in, and see what we can get done there. So we're asking for both.
These have to be voted on separately?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. If we move forward and this passes or fails, if it fails, he's not happy with it, he could bring it back when?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, there's no difference.
He could come right back.
Either way, so if you were to...
If we...
Or deny, he can come tomorrow and ask again.
Start over.
But he would have to start over with a new application fee and all of that.
Application. Withdrawals, he's in the same boat.
And if we...
No difference.
If we approve...
Approve, and he wants to change it, he will come back. He will go through the process all over again. So regardless of what you do tonight, if he's not happy, he can start again tomorrow.
So the question is, do we want to sit here and hash it all out, right here, right now?
Well, he may be happy. He may be happy with what we come up with, and he don't have to go spend engineer money.
Are you the...
If that's the case, I'll leave it up to you guys, and I'll sit and wait.
I'm usually open if somebody wants to pull to do that.
Sure.
But with this, with there not being any time delay, I don't see any reason to delay it. Throw it out there if you don't like it.
I believe we also have a speaker here, one of the neighbors?
Yeah, Ms. Carroll.
Yes.
That would like to have a say as well.
Cool. We'll do that right then.
Is that...
That works for us, yes, sir. I appreciate that.
Ms. Carroll, did you want to speak?
Good evening.
Ma'am, and if you would just state your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
My name is Carol Bukey. I live at 5381 Herbert Farm. Been in my home. We built the home in eight acres. So it's been 40 years. Forty. I'm also speaking for not only myself, but one who are my neighbors at 5381, who are here, who's lived in their home for 29 years, and also Ms. Agnes Kirkland, who has 27 acres side of me. I'm in the middle, and one is on one side. Her land has... Herbert Farm Road was a two-lane, roving road out there before in the very beginning. That piece of land is still in her... Emailed all of you and a report of her consensus on all of this. Quite good. So is that, would that be entered in the meeting at all, her email?
We do have it. Mr. Turner has it.
It would be important. It was a very good report that she did. Changes. Mister, I'm assuming, has the 17 acre or Oaks. And we are the only, there's the three parcels that are joined the 17 and a half acres. We're the only three property adjoining his 17 and a half acres. The Planning and Zoning Meeting of February 3 rejected the 15-foot variance and continued on with the 50-foot. Tonight, I'm asking the commissioners, have some talk with ourselves and with our to honor a compromise from a 50-foot, from a 15, well, 50-foot, and then they said 15-foot with a fence. We're compromising to a 25-foot variance with a fence. A wood, six-foot solid wood fence, with an addendum that the Four Oaks Homeowners Association be responsible for maintaining that fence. That would be our request, a compromise from 50-foot, 15-foot with a fence. They had 50 first, and they want 15 with a fence. So we're now saying we can go 25. That would be, would think would be appropriate for what, trying to compromise and work with the builders. With the 17 and a half acres and approximately 132 homes go in that area that he's looking at, the homes with two to four persons in each, there are probably 260 to 528 more people in that area. That's right behind us. And with the increase of this population from all walks of life, we who boarded this development are subjected to trespassing vandalism, as I have already been a victim of that from some folks from South Winds, up the road behind us and into the woods, and they actually tried to break in my house. So I've already been subjected to that back a couple of years ago. And there are other changes to this neighborhood noise from everyday life, dogs, kids, noisy yard maintenance cars, you know, and it's going to be a pretty busy area back there. And so even if it 25-foot, it's going to be very close. But at least we're trying to work with them in having a fence that may prevent a lot of people coming out. So there again, if you guys could honor us with a approval of a 25-foot variance with the fence, stipulation that the Four Oaks Homeowners Association maintain that fence. Supposed to be a six-foot wooden fence, I understand, from the zoning people.
Ma'am, just so I can get a picture, do you see the orange line here?
Yes.
Is that your property line?
Yes, I'm in 5381. I'm not sure what parcel I am. I'm probably right about...
Touch the screen.
You can draw on it. We cannot.
I'm not really sure where I am on this map. I know Ms. Kirkland probably starts... I'm probably around. Probably five or six.
Her house sits approximately here as far as distance from her. It's about 350 feet from her back of her house to her property line.
However, however, I do have some property back there that I may want to develop at some point, as does everyone else. Ms. Kirkland has that one. Fine. Liability possibly to her, kids coming in and out of there too. So we just feel the 15-foot variance, even with the fence, is still too close. But we should be able to compromise 50 versus a 15, 25. Thought that would be a fair approach to this.
Thank you, ma'am. You want to have the opportunity to...
Mr. Sardar, why were we at 50 to begin with?
The code requires anyone that does a major site grading, which is basically clearing land, leveling it out, mass grading, to have a 50-foot buffer between where they stop work and their property line.
And this would be considered mass grading development?
We have not seen their plans. I'm assuming you plan on doing a major site grading.
That's in the plans for right now, I guess.
And we kind of changed, we kind of changed our code after the start of Four Oaks. We created the 50-foot buffer. Mr. Sterling, do you know?
They were 16, I believe.
And y'all were approved in 14 or 12 or something like that.
That's correct.
So they started under a different pre-teen. So they're just kind of caught in the middle, but it's still, to me, given a variance to the 50-foot buffer, I feel like that in the future, we'll have people requesting that we reduce that 50-foot buffer. So I think we need to.
So you're talking about precedent and open up a can of worms kind of situation?
Yeah, but I think we need to be fair with these guys, and I think we have a fair compromise from our standpoint of view. I don't know that it'll work for you, but I think it'll work for the neighbors, and I think it'll work for the county. We need, personally, I think we need the road, the connectivity of the two neighborhoods where somebody can get out on emergency or situation, and that's really going to help us to get there. So that's my part, but I didn't mean to steal your thunder, go right ahead.
No, you...
No, he's selling well.
Yeah, I was about to say, you said everything I needed to say, so I certainly appreciate that. But no, and that's what I would get at, is that Crestwood Parkway, you know, we're tying into South Wind there. That's going to allow for the connectivity. The biggest piece here is we are certainly open to any type of compromise with the county and neighboring landowners and homeowners. It's just an engineering thing, whether we can tie the roads in. We walked the site with my engineer last week, and there's some geography that's challenging that maybe may prevent larger buffers than, you know, than what we've already said or what we've proposed here. I just don't know until we get back in front of the engineer and let him take a look at it.
So is the road connectivity, Commissioner Richardson, is that one of the conditions in the Planning Commission report?
It will.
As part of this motion?
It, I don't think it's in the Planning Commission report at all about the connectivity, but...
We would be rewriting the whole decision thing as we're sitting here if we're asking him to do roads?
I think if we do this and make the compromise that I think would be fair, it'll take off the back of their property, it'll allow them to have the connectivity of the two neighborhoods.
But do you understand the request?
I do. If it's my understanding, and I want just to repeat that, we've asked for the 50 down to 15, and kind of like that came up just before me, Ms. Carroll, I believe, has said that she's okay with a 25-foot buffer there.
With a solid fence that belongs to your neighborhood? You...
No issues with that whatsoever. We would go as far to say, you know, if we can't get the engineering to work, we would still go after, or ask the 15-foot buffer with additional, us planting some vegetation on site there to help with the buffer that she would be foregoing.
And you would build that road?
Oh, absolutely. The Crestwood Parkway and connect to South Wind, absolutely. Work that out with Five Star Development.
And the options are to decline it or pass it, as Ms. Carroll has suggested. And if it doesn't work, completely no different than us declining it. You still have to come back for a change.
When you say pass it, you're talking about what?
As it...
I'd like for Commissioner Skinner to make a motion and see if he can get a second, and then we pass it, and then they're do what they need to from there.
Yes, sir.
Need to come back to address it. It may pay work.
Could solve. If not, you're going to come back anyways.
Fair enough.
Yeah, you go.
Fair enough.
Yes, sir.
You could solve it tonight or...
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on this. Item B4, File VA220203. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to Section 34-1, major site grading for property located at Tax Map 060, Parcel 1628, to reduce the required buffer with the following condition. 25-foot buffer shall include both natural vegetation, the structural elements such as a privacy fence or wall. Fence must be a minimum of six foot in height, must present a finished appearance to the neighboring properties. Natural vegetation within the buffer is to remain undisturbed and shall be supplemented with additional plantings where necessary to create a sufficient visual screen. Additional plantings are to be coordinated with the county landscape architect during the preliminary plant review and must be installed prior to final plant approval. Fence shall be maintained by the homeowners association. Does the road need to be listed in the...
That'd be wild, I mean...
It's part of the, it's part of the...
Part of their plan.
Part of the plan.
Their concept plan would have to go back to Planning Commission?
It did.
So the Planning Commission...
But they could do that as concurrent application with their first, the preliminary plant. Access to this site is by, you know, Four Oaks, Section 2C to the south, that road connection that you see at the bottom, and then also the South Wind section at the north side, top side. That's the only way into the site is through those existing developments that are either under construction or already completed.
What you see here is the concept plan that was submitted for approval to the Planning Commission. When the Planning Commission denied the variance, they also denied the concept plan. So if you grant this variance, they will have to come back to the Planning Commission and apply, I mean, and submit this concept plan showing that road, which is what Commissioner Malier was referring to, showing that road. So the Planning Commission will have to vote on this.
Well, let me correct. I'm sorry. Let me restate my... If you approve the concept plan, then they're good. If they have to change it, they'll have to come back for...
Yeah, that's what I thought. If it's approved here is...
It's done. The concept's done.
You want them to say concept plan?
Well, they're, yeah. You'll have to approve the concept plan. Well, Planning Commission turned both of them down.
Yeah. I mean, I think y'all can, y'all can approve it as a board without it going back.
But they don't have that concept print in front of them.
But yeah, but this is changing, right? So you're not, not going to have exactly like this.
You don't have it in front of this.
I think it's procedural anyway, so you can move forward this plan. There are procedural things that the staff has to clean up. We will either take it back to the Planning Commission or take, bring it back before this body, whichever one is pertinent.
To the original point, though, I think it would be, go down the connectivity as a...
To the road, yeah.
Yeah, as a condition. You can amend your motion to add that.
I will amend my motion to add the connectivity of the road, of both divisions, subdivisions.
Second. Got that, Patrice. Is everyone clear? All favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. Motion carries. You have one more, don't you?
I have one more. Uh, B five, file VA two two oh two oh four. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section thirty-four dash one, major site grading for property located at tax map zero six zero, parcel sixteen three zero, to reduce the required buffer with the following conditions. The buffer is reduced to zero feet only for the portion of the property line along the Bronco Pass extension between the new road and the Bartram Trail Pud. This reduction applies only to the property line on the north side of the project running northeast and does not apply to the majority of the northern boundary where the property line is angled northwesterly. The buffer along the northwesterly angled property line is reduced to twenty-five feet. The buffers along the northern property line shall consist of existing and/or planted vegetation that creates an attractive landscape screen for the adjacent development. Landscaping plans for this project of, of the buffer must be coordinated with the county landscape architect. It must be approved with a preliminary plant supplemental.
Second.
Crystal clear, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Clear.
All right, so here again is where you have a mass grading site. Code says fifty feet. Disting Bronco Pass is here. Hard to see on your, on your screen, but they are locked in to accessing this site by that road. Therefore, the only way to build that road is to violate that buffer. First part of your condition was to give them a zero-foot buffer in that location.
So, they can connect the road?
So, they can connect the road, correct. Then you have this area here, that's along Bartram Trail Golf Course. What you can't see on here is there is a thirty-foot HOA piece of property that follows that, so there's a thirty-foot wide parcel, and then the Bartram Trail Golf Course proper starts. They're asking to go from the fifty-foot buffer to a twenty, they asked for twenty. The motion was to go to twenty-five-foot buffer along the HOA property which separates the golf course property.
So, there'll be fifty-five feet from, with the two buffers together.
So, to count the golf course buffer as part of the fifty?
That, that is their request to, it's not the golf course, it's the HOA owns the property. The Bartram Trail HOA owns a thirty-foot strip between this property and the golf course property. So, the, yes, they are asking to use that thirty-foot strip as credit towards their fifty-foot buffer. The compromise was twenty-five foot.
So, it's fifty-five feet?
So, this is the, this is the parcel in question here. The, the HOA property is that thirty-foot strip there, and then the, the golf course proper here.
And the HOA has weighed in?
The HOA has weighed in, and they were fine with allowing the, actually, they were okay with the twenty-foot. But I think the compromise would be twenty-five, which, what you did with the-
I kept that at twenty-five with my recommendation because of what we did on the other piece and just keeping it consistent.
What are the other homes on the golf course?
Oh, there's some, if you go back, there's, there's some, if you look here, this is hole seven.
Seven's up or left.
Yeah, so this is hole seven. That, that house there, you can see their pool is right up against the golf course property line. In this location, the golf course, uh, the cart path actually extends onto, um, that property. Um, there's other areas on the golf course. You have any more pictures, Patrice? Yeah. Go back where you were. There you go. If you look here, you, you can kind of see where we got a ten-foot build minimal, excuse me. That's a ten-foot minimum build line that is referenced there, then you got a thirty-foot buffer, and then you're twenty-six feet away from the cart path in this location. Total of sixty-six point eight feet to, to the closest location a house could be. Which, if y'all approve this motion, you're fifty-five feet, plus the ten-foot minimum build line, so you're at sixty-five feet. So, you're following along with what's on other locations of the golf course.
For a second?
Pause.
Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Legal matters. Matter, don't we?
They do, I know it. Uh-
Doc, you were a-
Person who started the, the deal, give me good news.
So, what you have before you is, uh, is a resolution, actually, two resolutions that we're going to have tonight. Resolution twenty-two oh seven and twenty-two oh eight. Uh, and what these have to do with is a advanced refunding of our general obligation bond. When we did these bonds in twenty seventeen, we had a five percent coupon, uh, on these bonds. Uh, we've been able to, because of the, the fluctuation in the market, we've been able to negotiate an advanced refunding on these bonds to get that interest rate down to, I believe it's two three six for the first one? Two three six for the first one, and then when the bonds are callable in twenty twenty-seven, um, we will have a two-point zero one percent interest rate. What this does is this saves the taxpayers four point one two, four, sorry, four point one five million dollars in interest between now and twenty twenty-seven, um, just by going through the process, and that's net savings. That, that includes all the, the cost of issuing the bonds, the legal fees and everything that needs to be done. So, you do have two motions before you. The first one would be to do the advanced refunding on the twenty seventeen bonds, which will hence be referred to as the twenty twenty-two bonds. And then we will do that again. Those will be taxable bonds, and then we'll go back to non-taxable bonds in twenty twenty-seven. That's the second motion, and go down to the lower interest rate. Um, based on the, the, the information that I've been given and the direction I've been given by this board, it would fully be our intention to even pay these off early, but we can't do that until twenty twenty-seven. So, at the worst-case scenario, when they're callable in twenty twenty-seven, we'll go down to a two-point zero one interest rate. Uh, but if we're in a position to pay them off early, we'll pay them off early in twenty seven.
The interest rate is two-five-five.
I'm sorry, two-five-five.
But the savings is-
Yeah, four point one five million dollars. I think we had two different numbers, so, yeah. But the other one's two-point oh one, correct?
Sir, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two oh seven to, uh, regulate and provide for the issuance of Columbia County Geo Refunding Bond Series twenty twenty-two to finance the cost of advanced funding, uh, refunding a portion of the Geo Bond Series twenty seventeen.
Second. Interesting, because I think some of this started with our discussion. We're in a good position. How can we get out of debt? How can we eliminate county debt?
Right.
So, I just accolades to you, Scott, for digging into this and finding what we can. We can't pay it off early, but we can renegotiate.
We can save some money.
Pay four million dollars, which-
Right.
Another home run, so thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you. Next, I make a motion to approve resolution, resolution number twenty-two oh eight to regulate and provide for the issuance of Columbia County Geo Refunding Bond Series twenty twenty-seven to refinance the cost of advanced refunding a portion of the Geo Bond Series twenty twenty-two.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. No requests to review by committee? Any, uh, public comments? One executive session item, which I believe we can deal with right now. Vice Chairman, please.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve one hundred and seventy-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars. SSB Manufacturing Company, parcel zero, number zero six nine zero zero one G, permanent and temporary easement needed for the Horizon South Parkway Road Widening Project.
Second.
This is a, this was a big one we had to get here, SSB. Uh, you see, it's a, quite a large one. We're down to our last two. John Deere proper is one of them, I forget the other one.
Got a sign.
The sign. We're, we're down to our last two hard ones, but we're, we're close, and we're looking for an end-of-the-year advertisement on this project.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Nothing left on the agenda. I guess only one more motion needs to be made?
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We're adjourned. Thank you.